Could we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Alex. Yes. Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Kuplinski. Ms. Reed. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. So thanks to everyone for coming out this evening. The topic of discussion will be zoning, changes to the zoning code for the city of Harrisburg. First, I would like to thank Kemp, Kirk and YMC for allowing us to use the space so that we could maximize community participation in these discussions. Today's meeting is the second of three. If you, after today's presentation, you have additional questions or concerns are raised, please make sure to come in tomorrow where we have, where we will have the third meeting, and that will be at the Boys and Girls Club on Barry Hill. The final, the day, the scheduled time for the vote on this ordinance will be July 8th. But obviously, that's a legislative session, so there won't be the community discussion at this point. So this is really your opportunity to have as much say as possible into the process and ask questions, get clarifications. And I think that's it for my end. I will go ahead and pass the microphone over to Ms. Jackie Parker, who is, who will do the present, who will be doing the presentation explaining the changes to the code.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. I hope everybody has signed in. It's very important, as this is a public hearing, to sign in out there outside. Also, I hope you picked up some information that we passed out. We passed out the PowerPoint, also some history, and also a synopsis of the changes for the zoning code, so that it's a little more simple that you can take a look at it. I'm also probably going to have a few points brought up by Tim Riordan, who's here from the Tri-County Planning Commission, and has been very helpful in the process over the years. He's our only planner here tonight, because our planner is in Brazil with the World Cup, so I'm filling in for him. And he's actually the gentleman that knows a lot more about planning than I do. But I would like to present this information to you to, again, as Councilwoman Daniels has said, to stimulate conversation. It is, this is not, and I think, you know, many people have been thinking that this is just recent, and it is not recent. It has started, if you look at your, if you look at your history sheet, it has gone through many iterations over the years, starting back in 2010, I believe. And you can see that there was a lot of thought to it. And the reason is, is because we haven't had a zoning code changed since the 1950s. There have been other updates, there have been amendments, but a city like Harrisburg needs to look out at what they would like to see for their community. And if you think about the different parts of the city, what would you like to see as far as building growth, housing, downtown businesses, areas that are mixed-use, a lot of mixed-use areas, and, you know, how do we see the future of the city? So I'm going to go through the PowerPoint, and then, at the end, it's not very long, it's just, you know, again, talking about why we do zoning, what the basis and the history has been, what we have, which was over there. You can see all the many, many, many zones that we had, and now we just have a few zones that we're recommending that would be, that are going to be a lot more, we think, flexible. Okay. So. Fred guaranteed me this was going to work. Oh, there we go. So. Hold on. So this is just the agenda, just background, comparison with the draft zoning codes, some proposals, next steps, and any kind of questions that we might have. And again, we certainly will stimulate discussion, I'm sure. Zoning code was last done in 1950. We had a subdivision and land development code change in '64, 1990. There were state and federal regulations on the floodplain management, stormwater and air quality, so we've had some updates that affect those that were mandated. And then the municipal planning code of 1968 does say that we should be updating our zoning as often as we feel that we, as we look at growth for a community, for the city, we should be taking a look at that. It should be a dynamic piece of information for us. So the zoning map divides the city into open space, residential, commercial, and industrial zoning districts. Their specific land uses are allowed in each zoning district permitted, not permitted, or special exception permit. In the code, in, if you, if you take a look at the code, and it's online, and it's in our libraries, there's a copy up here you can take a look at, there is a pull-out grid that explains the, each zoning area, and then things that are not permitted, permitted, or special exception. We tried to cover as many uses as possible. There's a part about signs, and also about parking. So here's the evolution of the current zoning code. 1950, we had 11 districts. 1967, 11 districts. '77 zoning code, 21 districts, and district overlays. And by 1988, we had 29 districts and six overlays. It's very, very confusing. So the problems with the existing code is old. There's pyramidal zoning, which means you kind of refer, as you, as you change it, then you refer to the previous, and then you refer to a previous, so it's, and that's called pyramid-ing. Again, very, very confusing, because when you look at it, then you have to go to a previous section, then you have to go to a previous section, and so then it's very hard to interpret. There were, there were a prohibition of certain home occupations in certain residential zoning districts, so we know that how many people would like to have home businesses, and so we've tried to make that a little more accessible. And also, there were inadequate public notices for special exceptions and variances, because we were constantly going to the zoning board and going through, because there were so many districts going through the process for special acceptance and special exceptions and variants. So this is the 1950 zoning map with some revisions. As I said, there had been, have been amendments over the years, and that's this one over here. And it's in your, it's in your handout. Current zoning map, and look, I know it's very small, but there's, I'm sorry, this is the current zoning map, and then here is proposed zoning map. And I know these are both very small, but hopefully you can read the legend, and you can all come up here later on and take a look at the legends. So why do we do it, and why did the city decide to take this on? Again, to protect and preserve existing neighborhoods while encouraging reinvestment and revitalization. To increase opportunities for decent, safe, and affordable housing for renters and owners. To protect and foster appropriate expansion of existing institutions, like the State of Pennsylvania Capitol Complex, hospitals, public and private schools, university, and other uses. And to increase the protection of historic resources, which is, includes our historic neighborhoods and the national registered properties. To protect the Susquehanna River and prevent development practices which harm water quality. To ensure that new development does not increase the potential for loss of life or property due to flooding. To incur, to increase opportunities for open space. We didn't really have a zone that called, that called, was called open space. And recreational opportunities, including the completion of the Capital Area Green Belt, and to provide additional access to these amenities for all neighborhoods. And also to encourage mixed-use development near the Harrisburg Transportation Center. At that time, there was a lot of discussion about the corridor on Cameron and Market Streets. Still, it is a, it is a dynamic area with lots and lots of potential. If you read some of the reports, the Bridge-to-Bridge Report that was done by Credic, also if you talk to PennDOT and Amtrak, that train station and the surrounding area is very, very ripe for redevelopment. I just met with PennDOT yesterday, and they are, you know, talking about, and they have been doing a lot of planning down in that area. Also, when we talk about use, doing a CRIS, which is the city's revitalization investment zone, you're looking again at the train center. As a transit intermodal unit, DCD is indicating that's a prime area for planning dollars to say what else can happen here. And, you know, as a transportation hub, that is a transportation-oriented development. And, you know, that's the area where you can find a lot of people, you have amenities, you can, you know, talk about all the other possibilities that are in that area. So even back then, that was a focus for the city, and still is. So we're condensing, this is our, this is the proposal, condensing zoning districts from 29 base districts to nine, seven overlay districts into four, reclassification of parcels to open space such as Wildwood Park and other areas, reclassification of parcels to institutional districts like HAC, state capital, hospitals. I know it was Poli Clinic had talked to me about where they are, where they're located on Third Street, now that we institutional. Expansion of the downtown boundary, again, that was very key at the time for a lot of the discussion of what should our downtown look like. Decreasing industrial zoning in South Allison Hill. Home occupations permitted in all homes, and rooming houses permitted as accessory use only. So we really wanted to take a look at what, you know, what kind of housing and opportunities are for our neighborhoods, and we wanted to limit rooming houses. To encourage the use and expansion of all alternative transportation modes, including light rail, bus, rapid transit, and pedestrian and bicycle modes. To encourage the redevelopment of vacant industrial parcels in the downtown and neighborhood areas. And to implement the goals, policies, and strategies of the City of Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan. And I do want to talk about that, because I'm sure many of you know that we are starting the comprehensive planning process. Again, the City of Harrisburg hasn't had a comp plan in years. The zoning is part of that. It's, the comprehensive plan is a vision for the city. The community comes together, you have public charrettes for each area. Where do you want your growth? Do you want it heavy growth? Do you want it to be neighborhoods, housing areas? What kind of housing? Housing opportunities for everybody? Where you want your, you know, your high mercantile entertainment areas? You know, so how, how would you like the city to look, you know, to look in the future? Zoning goes with that, so that when you talk to developers or people who want to come in and invest, you can say, "Look, we have a zoning code. This is how we want to direct it. This is what we'd like to see as a city and a community." So that we aren't surprised one morning when we wake up and we find something that is, you know, is offensive. In the morning, when you don't, you know, you're thinking, "Why is that there?" Because there isn't the appropriate zoning. So really, a comp plan is the key to go along with zoning, a zoning rewrite. We are beginning that comp plan process. What we're recommending to city council is that they pass the zoning code proposed, because we need the tool. The tool that we have now is so archaic and very, very difficult for developers now to work with, that we pass it now. As we begin this comp plan process, we can always, always tweak and amend the zoning code as we see what works and what doesn't work. And so that's, that's why we hope that it works in a parallel. The comprehensive planning process will probably take 12 months, maybe 15 months. So, you know, it's a process, and it's an ongoing process with lots of discussion, with lots of areas. We're going to look at infrastructure, we're going to look at housing data, we're going to look at our parks, and we're going to look at stormwater management, we're going to look at green, sustainable uses all around the city. And again, have that discussion of what the city would like to see for the future. So each of those components go into a comp plan, and along with that, development ideas and zoning. The overlay districts are opportunities that can happen in certain areas. So we have a floodplain district, and that, of course, is dictated by the state and FEMA and PMA, and the airport zoning overlay district, municipal historic district, and architectural conservation overlay district, because we want to preserve the historic fabric of neighborhoods. All overlay districts exist, are already existing in the current code. So the format of draft zoning code is zoning district regulations are streamlined, development standards for each zoning district contained in one chapter, so you don't have to look all over in other chapters, sign standards for each zoning district contained in one chapter, and the pyramid zoning that I was referring to is eliminated. So you don't have to keep going back and forth to different areas, because you're referred to by one, one section. So this is what the current zoning code looks like. Take a look at it in your handout. The draft zoning code, this is now going to be so much easier, because you're going to have a grid. So you have the grid, you can just whip it out and say, "Look, what is permitted in open space? What's permitted in residential light? What's permitted in commercial neighborhoods? What's permitted in downtown? And the special districts and industrial?" And you can see what's permitted, what's going to take a variance, I mean, what's not permitted, and what's going to take a special exception, if there's something that you could come before the zoning board, and it might be approved, a special exception. So again, just to go over the history, you have the history there, you have the timeline. November of 2009, it was released for public review after many meetings. January and February 2010, the Planning Bureau holds more meetings, 14 meetings with neighborhood groups and other organizations, as well as three public meetings. March of 2010, the Planning Bureau compiles public comments received through March 2010. May 5th of 2010, the zoning code was released. In November of 2009, the, as you can see, there were outreach efforts, so we posted on the city website, January and February of 2010, the Planning Bureau held the 14 meetings, as well as three meetings, and then there were, there were more, there were more meetings, as you can see in your, in your handout. These are our next steps. We're going to vote on the proposed zoning code, you know, with amendments if necessary, on July 8th. We're going to begin the comprehensive plan for the city, as we discussed. The zoning code will complement the comprehensive plan, and a zoning code can be tweaked to support the comp plan. I would like to have Mr. Riordan, Tim Riordan, just speak a little bit about the process, because he was involved with the process from before, because he is a planner, because he understands the process and the need for a zoning code. Tim?
Thank you, Jackie. First, I am Tim Riordan, I'm the Executive Director at Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. I do want to state that I am not here in my regional planning capacity, I am not here in my Dolphin County capacity. I am here as a professional planner to offer technical assistance to the city. We have no opinion on any of the districts, we have no opinion on any of the projects. That will all come out. As far as the process, I think Jackie said a couple of key points. One of the parameters to decide whether you need to update a zoning ordinance is the number of issues that you're dealing with when people come in for permitting. And she noted that there were a number of special exceptions that needed to be done, there were a number of home occupations that couldn't be granted, because the zoning ordinance was not up to speed with what contemporary thinking would be. So I think that's one issue. To the people who think that the comp plan needs to come first, generally on a scale, it does. You would generally, if you're starting at the ground level, you would have your comprehensive plan, and the zoning ordinance is actually an implementation tool. And I apologize for, don't worry. So a comprehensive plan technically is not even required by municipality. A series of community objectives and goals is all that's required in order to have a zoning ordinance. That said, you do have a comprehensive plan, it is outdated, there are opportunities to move forward within the comprehensive plan process. The zoning ordinance is effectively a 1950's zoning ordinance. There's a lot of techniques and tools that have come into play since then, that this particular zoning ordinance will put into play for the city. Zoning amendments are obviously a tool that can be used, and the Planning Commission and council should get used to using that as a tool. When there is an opportunity for the city to take advantage of a potential use that doesn't quite fit into the zoning ordinance, they should look at, what do we need to do to make that happen? If it's in fact something that they want. Again, a comp plan, if that starts now, you're probably looking at about 18 months before that's completed. And then to turn around and amend the comp plan, you're probably talking another 18 months. So you're probably talking at least three years, three to five years before you're getting back to a new zoning ordinance. If this plan were not adopted, you'd be dealing with a 1950's ordinance for five more years, say. I really would encourage council and the city to pursue the comprehensive plan. I'm sure there's a lot of great ideas out there that you want to bring into play as opportunities for the city, and then use the zoning as a tool to implement that comprehensive plan. The other piece that Jackie said that I like to tell people is that the, a lot of people think that comprehensive plan is done maybe every 10 years. It's done, sits on a shelf. Both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance are dynamic processes. I don't really like to call them a plan, because it's more of a process. When things happen and opportunities occur, you have to be in a position to make that adjustment, and that would involve your comp plan and your zoning ordinance. So both of those are dynamic processes, and if we think of them more as a process than a plan, than a document that sits on a shelf, I think that would help the city with moving through any amendment type of process that could occur, whether it be in the comp plan side or the zoning. So.
Thanks, Tim. Okay. That's the end. So now we will all go into questions. I don't know if council would like to start? And again, I am, I will be glad to take any, any questions for discussion, and then if there's any information that we don't have tonight, we can certainly get back to you. We have another meeting tomorrow night, too.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Ms. Wilson?
No questions, maybe comments. Maybe a comment. I think this is moving in the right direction, because the City of Harrisburg has certainly been behind in terms of their zoning code. And hopefully, as time continues to move forward, as new ideas and/or suggestions come about, I think as Tim indicated, it's really, it's like a living document. So as process changes take place, we should be able to pull it from the shelf, alter it where it needs to be altered, but then modify it based on what's good for our community. Too often, things have been thrown out the window, and people assume that the people in particular neighborhoods don't want certain things. And so I think this opens up an opportunity that otherwise has been shut down. When you look at how it was laid out before, I think that zoning map was done to assist people who had special things that were taking place. And that makes it a lot easier for people as they come in, that when they go through the grid, they'll know and they'll realize that it won't be so painstaking to get permits pulled, because it'll be real clear for them as to what they can pull in for, what can be used in those areas. And so as we continue to move forward, I just say, keep an open mind, and of course, I know council will keep an open mind, and make the changes where we need to. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. By the way, if you did not sign in outside at the desk here, to my left, please do so, so that we have a record of everyone who's been in attendance here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Council?
Just real quick, got a little bit of a planning background, and I would say that only anything that simplifies and makes it easier to do business in the City of Harrisburg, I'm in full support of.
So, thank you. For me, I just had one question, because I know it's on the minds of everyone who owns property in the city, right? What happens if you own a property and it is, it is no longer conforming according to the new zoning code? What, what are the consequences for that owner?
So if your property goes into another zone from what it is now, it becomes a non-conforming use. You may continue that use for as long as you want to use it. It goes on as long as that same use that you have, that is the non-conforming use. Once it changes to something else, you have to see if it's a non-conforming use in that zone or not. Then you would have to come and see if it's, you know, permitted by the zoning code, but you can continue whatever business you have, whatever, whatever that building is now is grandfathered, so that continues. If there was a fire or a flood, you still have a year to rebuild and become the non-conforming use. It goes right back to that, to that use. Yes, class?
Does that remain the case as long as you own the property, or does it change once the property changes?
That's a good question. Depends on the, on the use. Let me, I think it's in chapter, hold on here. There's a whole section on non-conforming uses. Let's see here.
It runs with the property.
Thank you. Okay. It runs with the property. So that means it would change, correct? You're saying it would change with the property? Now it change, it just goes with the use, then?
The non-conforming stays, so long as it hasn't been abandoned, runs with the property.
Okay, there you go.
To the extent of the property use.
Correct, okay.
So just to clarify, in that context, is this working?
Cut it off. I cut it off.
Oh, you're headed a mute. Okay. So just to clarify, if there's a property that's non-conforming, and the seller wants to sell that property to a new purchaser, and the new purchaser wants to continue that non-conforming use, could they do that?
Goes along with the property, yes.
Okay. And I have some questions, because I, as I was looking at the map, I realized my house is completely changed. I have a very peculiar home in that I have five garages attached to, that are close to my home, they're detached from the actual structure. So, and I haven't rented them out, as, you know, everyone suggested you do have to use them. I haven't really used them. So in that context, my property, if I decided, my property, I was in low-density residential, the RL category, so I don't, I don't think I could, if I decided two years from now to rent out those garages, that I could as a business, even though I have five garages, and I could. I don't ask, I don't know why the person built five garages.
It's a grandfather right.
Yes, go come in and get a permit. I don't know, I will have to look that up. I don't know. Yeah, not off the top of my head, but I'm sure the grid could, you know, could explain that.
And just one last comment. For those of you who are looking at your properties, and what you could or couldn't do with your properties, the, where the checklist, where the grid is, it begins on page 17 of the proposed zoning plan. So as you download it from the website, or if you go to the different areas where the code, where the proposal is available for review, that's the area that, you know, that's the page to really turn to, to see, you know, how much your current property will be impacted by these zoning changes. So that's really it for my questions. I'm going to pass this on now to public comments, so I'll just give the microphone to the assistant clerk, so he could take your questions.
Questions? Hello, my name is Philip Dobson, 407 North Front Street in Harrisburg. My concerns are in the industrial areas. The current zoning has a manufacturing light and a manufacturing heavy district. They're converting it all to just industrial. But they seem to be adopting the more heavy industrial restrictions. So that means that currently, like on Cameron Street, there's a lot of vacant land with large parking lots, which would be ideal for a restaurant or a store, but they will not be permitted. They are permitted now, but they will not be permitted in, under the new zoning. And I think that the restrictive nature of the industrial zone now is going to be counterproductive to the community goals of developing those areas, because you won't have an Applebee's or a McDonald's going in on Cameron Street, because it's not permitted, even though I could open a Steel Foundry. But it's not practical, it's not big enough, it's not conducive to it. So I think that an amendment would be in order to expand the industrial use, or the industrial areas to a few more additional uses.
And again, I, I'm just going to comment on the discussion we've been having recently, because the restaurants in an industrial area, we have discussed that, and we think that's probably a good idea. However, when you mention Cameron Street, that's not, not all going to be in the industrial, okay? Not all, but some of it's going to be in the downtown.
Most of it is in industrial.
And we have, we have thought about expanding that permitted use to be a restaurant.
Right. Yeah, Cameron Street is mostly industrial. If you look at your zoning map there, almost the whole corridor is industrial, except around Market Street there. I know you've made some changes. You expanded the downtown district, but the lion's share of Cameron Street is industrial. Going up North 7th Street, that's all industrial. And a good example, I, I had a car wash at 1901 North 7th Street. I've since sold it, but going north on the east side, that was all residential. It always was residential. I own a house there right now that's 1925, and it's still residential. There were houses that were built there probably at the turn of the century. They, they were built there They were built there, that was, you know, vacant land, they built houses there. It's zone manufacturing-heavy, but it was never manufacturing-heavy. It was always residential. Now, I understand the need for change, but as you go up that North Seventh Street corridor, for example, on the right side, on the east side, that would be a great spot for a store or a restaurant or some sort of retail use, but it won't be permitted. Same thing, it's currently residential, but residential will not be permitted either. So what I'm requesting is a small expansion of the use of the industrial areas by amendment to include retail, restaurant, residential. And I did buy the River Rescue Building. That is also an industrial use. And I propose putting in a theater there. A theater will not be permitted now under the new use. So again, I could smelt steel there, but I could not have a theater there. And across the street, if you look at what's around it, you have Hall Manor to the rear, you've got a church on one side, you've got the county building on one side, and you have Alcam. So you're surrounded. So that would not be a good place to manufacture steel, even though it would be permitted. So when you look at the practicality of it, I think that really, even though I understand industrial zones, you want industrial, but because of how Harrisburg was laid out in its day, and factories were built across from houses so people could walk to work, you have that close correlation between industrial and residential areas. But now, you know, as the city evolves, things have changed, cars are now more prominent. But, you know, when you look at all those valuable industrial areas, by restricting the use or raising the bar, I think it's going to be an impediment to development. And like I said, there is a lot of vacant land on Cameron Street that would be ripe for, you know, the only places where you can get two acres of land where you could put in a steakhouse or something where it's large enough, I mean, you can still build out of a floodplain, you can park in there, but again, it's not permitted under the new zoning. And I think that could be a problem.
I think we would look at those kinds of uses that would be entertainment, yes, a special exception or something like that, although it doesn't say that now. So we could look at that now. The other thing is I'm not sure that we would want residential there.
Well, again, residential sort of plays with what's existing already. Like I said, on North Seventh Street, you have residential there. It was always residential. It still has residential. You have, the lots are only 120 feet deep, so it doesn't really lend itself to, like, any type of industrial use, other than, you know, maybe more another row of houses up there. But to restrict it, I think, again, it's raising the bar and it's going to limit development in those areas.
You will take that into consideration. Again, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, I did prepare a letter, and I'll drop it off, and you know, you can do it as you please, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that's all right. I speak loud enough. I don't need a mic.
For the camera. For the camera.
Help for the audience.
And help me, I don't like to speak into it. Thank you. Now, can I get that away?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Special exceptions, I'm from a poor part of the city, but one thing about me, I'm educated. I'd like to say to the people that have made this new code thing in the city of Harrisburg, how it will affect certain areas of our great city. We don't have many people from where I come from in the city. We have a little thing of diversity here, but I don't know three-quarters of the people here. But I'd like to say this, and say it very candidly, Hall Manor area, the honorable woman did say, "We're not going to allow that here." I want to know why they come to this great city and make all of these demands and saying what they're not going to allow, when the great part of this great city is not even in this room? We have poverty in major areas of this city. And even what the honorable man said here, housing is a great thing, but we're not going to allow that here. So I'm standing here once again, in this form, protesting once again. They talk about there will be a great change in the city of Harrisburg. The change is here, but they are outsiders. They care nothing about our city, or this zoning that they are proposing for the city of Harrisburg would be reviewed a lot better. Three to five years, think about that, sir. Maybe this administration won't even be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Questions?
My name is Adam Meinstein, and my company is called Equilibrium Equities. I'm here because our company owns what was formerly the Keystone Branch Post Office Building that we acquired in September 2011, which is comprised of 11 acres going from the Mulberry Street Bridge back to Market Street, and from the rail lines back to 10th Street, missing one little piece, and a quarter million square foot industrial building. Equilibrium is a company that's been in business for about 10 years. Although I happen to live in Philadelphia, almost all of my business over the last 10 years has been in central and northeastern Pennsylvania. I don't have anything where I live. Why am I here? I'm here because we came into this community, we made ourselves a part of the community after the acquisition of this property, and have kept our fingers on what's going on here. And we had seen copies of this plan that was out for public comment four years ago, which is a long time ago. A lot of things were different. My hair was darker, and maybe somebody else had some other things going on as well. But we didn't own this property, and things were quite different. And in the intervening period of time, as I said, we saw this plan that was there, we spoke to some of our friends in the city, and everybody said, "Well, this was something, it's been through a couple of administrations, don't worry about it." And we really just became in the last, became aware in the last 10 days, two weeks, that this was being pushed through rather quickly. And when we made comments to somebody about a year and a half ago when we saw this, we said, "You know, this is concerning. This doesn't include the things that we're doing at the building." They said, "Don't worry, it'll come up, it'll come up for public comment again, and no sweat." So we quickly saw that this was coming to two public hearings and a vote on July 8th, and we said, "Oops, everything we are doing now at 8:15 Market Street is not listed as a permitted use in the zoning ordinance." Our property becomes a downtown center designation. Industrial is not listed as a permitted use. Parking is not listed as a permitted use. And that's all we do. That is the business we're in. Our history, we came in at a very difficult time in the city when the economy globally was in a great recession and the city was going through terrible times. And we made a strategic purchase and invested in the city. And quietly, over the last three years, took what was a property that could have become another victim like the other buildings in our neighborhood, but we rolled up our sleeves and we got to work. Started to immediately clean that building up. About a year and a half after we bought it, we were able to bring Metro back in as our lender. And we did a lot of heavy lifting to take that building and respect that building and turn it into something that we could create, leasable space, and see where the market would bring us, frankly, whether it be industrial, whether it be retail. We've let the market speak to us over that period of time. A little bit about the building, which if you've seen it and you come and are standing at the front of it, it's clearly an industrial building. It has two high-voltage electrical service backup generators, lots of dock doors, high ceilings, area for trucks to move around, and it is a very favorable industrial building that we have found over the last few years desirable in the tenant community. Not to dwell on it too much, but you know what's happened in our neighborhood while we've been busy. The other buildings have been sitting there and languishing, and we have been working on our streetscape on Market Street, cleaning up our parking lot, cleaning up the building, and being a good neighbor during that period of time. I'm a member of the chamber, I'm on committees in the city, and as I said, we've tried to, I'm not local, but we've tried to act local in everything that we do. The tenant demand is what has been compelling since we've owned the building. We have been able to take businesses that operate in the city of Harrisburg and were out of space, and to take care of them, those companies wanted to stay here specifically. Exhibit Studios down on Cameron Street, who owns their own building that was out of space, is now leasing 40,000 square feet of space from us on the first floor of our building. They handle conference materials, exhibits for a blue chip list of clients. They're doing work in our building. They store things in our building. I would say that some of those uses are a little different, that if we were just coming in fresh today with those uses, would we be able to do it? I'd probably have to talk to my friend Charles Courtney, who's my zoning attorney, who happens to be here as well with me tonight. Chef's Choice from the corner of Cameron and Market Streets started a new business, Keith Newcam, catering towards surplus restaurant equipment. He leased 14,000 square feet from us on the second floor, dedicated high-capacity freight elevators that we have serving our building, running up into his space. He needed industrial space. He takes that equipment in, he cleans it up, and it's a combination of storage, but it's also an e-commerce business because he puts that, posts that online and sells that stuff. Our second floor, we joke about internally that it's become our industrial hotel because when smaller tenants approach us, we find places for their goods. The Volunteers of America had their building burned down on Paxton, as you're Paxton and Cameron recently. They came to us about 10 days ago, we signed a lease with them for 8,000 square feet on our second floor, using our freight elevators, using our industrial zoning. Appalachian Brewery. The city of Harrisburg is leasing industrial space from us because we were approached by the city because the murals that were part of the Mulberry Street renovation project needed a home, industrial space, which we donated to the city to allow them to store 80 murals on our second floor. And we have other prospects who have approached us now, that as opposed to now, when I can say to somebody, "Yes, it's the city of Harrisburg, there have been a lot of problems, but look past that, you know, we have a good property, we've done a good job cleaning this up. Oh, but by the way, now we're a pre-existing nonconforming use, and I might need to go to the city because you're doing a few things that weren't in the industrial zone before, and da-da-da." My life has become potentially more complicated if the ordinance is passed as-is. So we are here simply, I have been doing this for a long time, we are respectful of everything that's going on. We're not saying, "Please don't plan, please don't modernize." We're saying, it's been four years since that public period, and we've been busy in that period of time doing good things. We're midway through our job, and this is going to be something that is not going to be good for us. There is a big difference between a permitted use and a pre-existing nonconforming use when you're a landlord and you're trying to convince companies to come in, and sometimes you're trying to get them to come in, and you're competing against other areas, and you might have to move quickly. You might have to be able to look at them the eye and say, "Yes, clearly, look at this piece of paper, not, let me put my tap shoes on and kind of explain it away." So I will tell you also that when I heard about this a couple of weeks ago, I called some of my friends in the community, and I said, "Did you know that what we do for a living is not permitted in this zone?" And they said, "No, no, no, no." In fact, somebody over at Kredik called me and said, "No, no, no, you're in the industrial zone." And I had to, then I called my zoning attorney, who didn't call me an idiot, but I made him look at the same map twice, and he said, "No, no, no, you're not in the industrial zone, you're in the downtown center." So there's been some confusion about what we're allowed to do. I don't think anybody was really thinking of us, nobody was picking on us. But when this got done and this plan was put forth, it had some age on it, nobody went out there and said, "Wait a minute, something has changed in this neighborhood, and we're going to be affecting the business that these folks are trying to do." I know the city is out there right now looking in some other neighborhoods for KOZ opportunities. We had KOZ, it expired at the end of 2013. It was mainly burned up by the post office while they were trying to sell the building. We had a little bit of it while we were getting things cleaned up, but it lasted for about one year. That was not extended. We're not in Alerta. We're in there with private dollars, doing what we do. We're a for-profit business, but I think it's been good for the community to have this space. The uses that are part of the downtown center zone, those are some of the things that we, when we acquired this property, why we thought this property was interesting. Certainly owning the equivalent of eight city blocks next to a transportation center is a good thing. And we knew that over the long term, with study, there would be the potential for a number of things that could happen there. But that's a project that involves multiple parties, Amtrak, PennDOT, the city, Norfolk Southern, and it's a very complicated issue that, you know, I don't, there hasn't even been a scope set for what that would even involve. So in the meantime, as opposed to our property sitting there lying fallow, looking like everything else in the neighborhood, our case is, "Help us out, please. Amend this so we have clear approval and these industrial uses that we're already allowed to do today." Why should a week from now, all of a sudden, we not be industrial anymore? Or whatever that date is. Please, yes.
So under the new structure, so you're currently using your property as a landlord and as a parking lot, right?
We have two, we have a quarter million square foot industrial building that is partially filled with tenants that we've been leasing.
So you're both landlords.
Yes, and we, in addition, thank you for mentioning something that's on my page. Yes, we have a second business that is also not listed as a permitted use. We started a business, we were approached, we were approached by the state of Pennsylvania, and--
Sorry, what's the business?
It's called Transit Park.
What does it do?
Transit Park is a 700-car parking facility--
Okay.
--that is part of our asphalt. So we split that. We were approached by parties that wanted us to go into the parking business. It wasn't something that we acquired the property for, and we found ourselves in that business. Transit Park is 700 cars, you can look at our website under transitpark.com, and we do two things. One is we have state workers, city workers, federal workers that rent spaces from us because of our proximity to the Capitol and whatever else. And we also have a very close relationship with Amtrak. If you go to the Amtrak station, you will see our validation machines inside the Amtrak station. So if you take Amtrak, you can validate your parking ticket, which you would get at our lot, and get a discounted rate, and you can park in our lot at that discounted rate as an Amtrak customer.
Okay, so still, the two usages are you have commercial tenants and you have parking lot?
Yeah, I have industrial tenants inside my building, and then there's a separate parking business as well.
So what uses will you add to that?
Yeah, well, I can let my council speak to this as well. The industrial is not just one category. This building had a history. It was a postal sorting facility, distribution facility, truck terminal. I have some companies in the building right now that are doing light assembly, some warehousing, whatever. I have some unoccupied areas of my building. But if I came to you and I said, "Okay, I have a new customer. My new customer is something else that would usually fit on an industrial chart, and would I be able to sign that lease with them today?" The answer is, it could be a problem for me. I can't just take everything inside my building and say, "It's a pre-existing nonconforming use, I'm allowed to do industrial." Today, I'm allowed to do that. I can lease out industrial space, whatever it may be. I don't have to worry if one of my tenant leases expires in two years, and they move out, they outgrow my space, whatever, and then somebody else comes in and they're in the electronics business. They are in some other kind of manufacturing business. I have my industrial building, same building, but it's changed, but I've lost something. I've lost my flexibility.
So your concern is that you may potentially have a new tenant that will use the property in a way that's beyond what it currently is being, what your current customers are using it as.
I am worse off. There is a big difference between a permitted use listed on the chart and a pre-existing nonconforming use.
Right, so that's--
That is the essence of my issue. We have vacant spaces that could fall subject to that right now. We have also the potential for future turnover in the building, and--
Do you have examples of these potential new tenants that could rent out this space that would--
I have, I will tell you, I have a customer now that's looking at a vacant space, and I will, I can't identify them because I haven't signed a lease with them, and it wouldn't really be appropriate because you could, they are in the city of Harrisburg, they have to move out of their existing location. And I contacted my zoning council, and I said, "Well, here's an example. This has happened. I have somebody looking at this space now." They actually told me, they heard about, they called me today through their broker and said, "We're concerned about this zoning thing. We think there's a question mark of whether you're able to commit to us because, you know, is there a question?" And the answer I got from Charlie was, "It could be an issue. It could be an issue. You can't just sign." Because if they say to me, you know, "We're going to, they're going to go-- You can't just sign, because if they say to me, you know, they're going to go move out of another location, I might have to spend money to build office space, this and that, and commit to them in a lease that this is okay. It's gray. It's gray. I can't afford gray. I need to know that the industrial uses that today, I could sign that lease without a problem, without this being enacted, I'd be fine.
So let me, let's have someone from Ms. Parker respond. What I think I'm hearing your question is, is that you're concerned that the change in your category of zone will impact your ability to secure other commercial tenants in the future. So the question is, if you are someone currently renting your property to other commercial entities or you're not the owner of those businesses or whatever it is, would that use be grandfathered in? What are the limitations? What are the...
I think, as we said earlier, a non-conforming use will go along with the building and along with the property. Warehousing, which is what you're doing, is a use and will continue with that property as long as you keep going with that use. And you are warehousing, so that's...
I'm not just warehousing.
I took a tour of your building, so...
I'm doing, well, we could get into it if you'd like. Yeah, we took a tour of my buildings. Exhibit Studios, as you could get by calling the president of Exhibit Studios, is constructing exhibits inside our building.
We don't have a mercantile license for him, by the way.
They are constructing space inside, I'm not selling their product, they are leasing industrial space inside our building.
And you don't have a mercantile license for that as well?
I have a mercantile license.
For parking.
For what?
Parking.
What do you think?
You have a mercantile license for parking? That's the only mercantile license that's listed at that property.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. I pay my property taxes, we have tenants...
I'm just trying to figure out what kind of, what business it is. It's either your business or several businesses within the building.
They pay us rent, to rent space from us and they make stuff. And it's not different than anybody else who has a lease with somebody for retail space, industrial space. The point is what they're doing is, inside their space, they make product. I'm allowed to rent them space because they are in the manufacturing business and they make things. So my point is, in the future, some other unoccupied area in the future, I want to rent that area out. Maybe it's never been used for that before. That might not fall into the category because somebody might say, oh, you can only do warehousing as you're here.
But in the way it is now, in that zone, you are able to continue that use forever.
Well, so the question I would ask the city is, why, you talk about warehousing, why wouldn't you want this, the city? We're proving out that there are people desiring space in this building. We've come in as an investor, we're doing good things in the property. Why wouldn't the city just want us to have the flexibility to create jobs and create those jobs in our building in a way that makes sense? Listen, I can't help it that somebody took an ordinance from four years ago and forgot to talk to us. And if they had talked to us before this had gotten to this point, I would have said, we have something to speak about here. We're doing business, this creates a problem for us as a, as somebody who is trying to rent space. It's hard enough to find businesses, convince businesses to come in, but it is different to say to somebody, we're a pre-existing non-conforming use. And just by the nature of the conversation we're having here, it's less clear than it is today, which is, we have industrial zoning, we're allowed to do anything that would be listed. If you look in the current zoning and say, what are you allowed to do in the industrial zone? A lot of those things don't fall in. So if you say they're not doing it now, would that be something that would be desirable? It could create issues for us. We need the ability to own an industrial property with 40 dock doors and 20-foot ceilings and a big truck door, to be able to rent it out as industrial space without feeling like we're at the whim of somebody who's passed a plan that has merit, but relates to very long-term things that people want to see going on in downtown. Why can't we have both? Why can't we continue on to do what we are doing in there and also have the potential to do some of these other things adjacent to the transportation center? No, it's not...
Again, that's what she's saying, that pre-existing use of the building, because you're already there, nothing for you is going to change. If there were someone new, let's just use as a different example here. If someone, once it gets rezoned in that area, for example, the Patriot News across the street, vacant building, nothing there. There's no one currently occupying it, so anyone new that would come in, would come in under the new code. Because you are pre-existing, your current practice is there today in terms of the various businesses and entities that are under your rules today can continue to operate and you can continue to bring businesses in under that framework.
Let me ask you a simple question. If I came to you today with this pending ordinance and I said, I have a 40,000 square foot manufacturer that wants to buy this vacant and suite, would that be allowed as a pre-existing non-conforming use, that manufacturing user, to move into that space?
Whatever is allowable, I don't know.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion.
Whatever is allowable in that zone is allowed tomorrow.
Right, right. My point is allowed today. The answer would be yes. I wouldn't be allowed to do it. In the future, the answer would be?
Should still be yes. No, it's yes. It's still yes, because it's allowed today.
But I don't have a current manufacturing use in that area. So go ahead, let me, I brought my zoning counsel because he's smarter than I am and I said, let me...
He might be smarter than me, but I think it's as simple as that you're already in the building, you're occupying it, so as things come in under that umbrella because it's there today, you will be continued, you'll still be permitted to use it as such. Unless, like I said, if you were occupying or going to buy the new building across the street from you, the Patriot News or the building next to it that's unoccupied, then the new planning and zoning would be applied because you wouldn't have those pre-existing things. Go ahead.
First of all, I'm not smarter than anybody. Lions can tell you that. Charlie Courtney, McNeese Wallace and Irk, 100 Pine Street. Just to kind of put a finer point, I mean, we started the discussion on the non-conforming and the continuing. And the zoning code, the current zoning code and the new zoning code have non-conforming use provisions, as most ordinances do. The right to continue a non-conforming use is a constitutional right, okay? It doesn't really have to be in the ordinances. What you see in ordinances are a whole section dedicated to non-conforming uses and those are generally not permissive because there's a constitutional right to continue. They're restrictive. And why are they restrictive? They're restrictive because they're intended to restrict a use that isn't consistent with the vision that's reflected in the zoning code. So what you have in, probably in your current zoning code, certainly in the new zoning code, are restrictions on expansions, restrictions on being able to, not being able to increase the intensity, which I'm not sure how that happens if you're expanding something. There are restrictions on, that you have to comply with district standards and, you know, moving from an industrial district to a downtown commercial district, my initial impression without kind of thoroughly looking at it, would be that all of the district standards were probably going to be non-conforming on that and so we're not going to be able to demonstrate compliance with those provisions. There is a, as is in most ordinances, in this one, there's a presumption of abandonment if the property's vacant for a year or longer. And so all of those things, put together, what they're trying to do is to restrict and in some cases, eventually stifle, suffocate and eliminate the non-conforming use because it's not consistent with the vision. You can continue, but at some point, you know, businesses need to grow and they might need to grow beyond the expansion capabilities that are allowed in the ordinance. And so what non-conforming stigma eventually does is it eventually wears out the use. And then, once the use is gone, a conforming use has to come back in. So that's, now, if we're putting in the context of 815 Market Street, the non-conforming analysis is probably a nightmare because it's not like that is a, you know, today being operated as one post office facility where you have one tenant occupying the whole space, you know what the use is, you know what the principal use is. Here, you've got in that building, multiple tenants doing multiple different types of industrial uses. And they all have space that's allocated to them. So if you were to adopt the zoning ordinance on July 8th, they're all allocated a certain amount of space for their different uses and it's not, they're not all quote industrial uses. It might be warehousing, it might be manufacturing. There's a, you know, a list of 15 or 20 different types of industrial uses. So they're protected to the extent of that non-conformity at the time. Well, you can imagine, even if the city were to say, you know what, we're just going to treat it all as industrial and we'll look the other way and, you know, we'll help you out, it only takes one disgruntled neighborhood and property owner to throw a monkey wrench into that. So that's kind of the, one of the problems that you have. The other problem is, the stigma of non-conforming uses, you have tenants who are looking at making an investment in a property. When they're leasing space or they're going to move their business there, that's an investment. And they want to know, not only that can they operate day one, but that they're going to be able to operate five years from now as they expand. The other thing is, they're probably getting a loan from a bank to make that investment. And banks are very sophisticated, particularly coming out of the economic crisis. They're very sophisticated on land use issues and they understand what non-conformity means. And they understand, you know, the difference between a building or a lot that's non-conforming from some dimensional standpoint and a use that's non-conforming. So the effect, the worst thing that can happen to any property that you want to see continue to be utilized is give it the non-conforming stigma and say, no, no, you're okay, you'll be able to continue to use it. That is, that's the worst thing that can be done. The solution here is simple. You know, there might be, as Adam indicated, long-term, different vision for this property. And, you know, being next to the transportation center, probably a lot of opportunities. So you can do one of two things. You can change the purple area to gray and make it industrial, or you can keep it downtown commercial and allow industrial uses for, for example, for existing industrial buildings. There's a thousand ways we can fix this problem, but a solution can't be, well, just rely on the non-conformity. That's going to stifle the revitalization. But there's other ways that we can fix it and we'd like the opportunity to work it, you know, work that through with you so that when the ordinance is adopted, that his revitalization isn't interrupted.
I think Adam's question about the length of time on when things were done is relevant to why it should be done now. This didn't start four years ago. That map is a mess. Every time we change that map, someone's going to be affected. There's just no way to alter that. This is a simplification of that map and a zoning map, by definition, is a planning document for the future. That's what it is. And we haven't been unable in Harrisburg to plan for a very long time because each time there's been, this is going to affect me, I think, in the future, things stopped getting planned, which isn't good for frankly, anybody in the city. Not for any business. It might be good for a particular business, but for the overall growth of the city, that formula has failed us. So there's always going to be uncertainty. And I think, you know that, counsel, there's always going to be uncertainty and there isn't just a couple options. You know, it isn't that the building is what it has. And I want to go back to what Ms. Parker said because I'm not sure, sir, that you got her point. What do you look at for conforming and non-conforming in the future? How do you say someone was there? The city, like any city, has a series of ordinances which require certain things to a business. And that is the evidence of what use it is. Our current look, I believe for Ms. Parker's bureau was, we went, the only permit for mercantile that's in there is for parking. So to lock in your uses that you have now, each of those businesses has to get a mercantile license, a business license in the city that identifies what it is. And that will be, help you lock in your many uses you're talking about. But if the record stays blank, you know, it's a self-inflicted wound at that point because someone for their, didn't put in for their $40 permit, you know, they're risking, you know, saying this use wasn't there. It's an easy fix. And, you know, and I'm willing to say, gosh, maybe we're behind in the process, I don't know. But I don't see that we're getting these licenses for these other places, you know, at least that's what's come through where we are. So if they're there, that helps, I think, if there's a variety of things there to put them in. Light manufacturing, it would always, I don't care if it's today, last year, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, it's always going to depend what it is exactly because it's one person's definition is another. And, you know, there's going to be other, is there other regulatory things that we have to take into account or D E P regulations? What are they doing? So those are always going to be considerations when anyone's manufacturing in an urban area. And we're not opposed to people having businesses here. We're just, you know, at some point, it has to move forward or you're always literally going back to the drawing board. And this is a zoning map, a zoning plan. We're going into a comprehensive planning stage. And when we go into comprehensive planning, it's open meetings for uses for all kinds of things. What is the future of the city? There's lots of data, lots of people involved. And I would invite that you're involved as well and say, this is my vision, this is our vision. And that comprehensive plan will lead to a revision and refining of this. But you got to stop, every time we do it, we expend lots of hearings, lots of time, lots of money the city has spent getting through these places and people go back to the drawing board. And, you know, and we end up with an entire list of exceptions that are thrown in one by one, area by area, that are unworkable in any pragmatic way for planning. So I don't think there's any, you know, there's no intent to damage your business, to damage your vision, to damage your future. It's to get control of the big picture so the city is better for you and better for everybody else here, both living and working. And, you know, that's what the zoning code is for. It's not here to just hammer people, but we've got to move forward.
So I just have to follow up. If you're moving forward with this regardless, are these public meetings simply a formality? If nothing that this businessman says, because clearly that map, the purple area on that map has been changed since four years ago. To add a little square of gray that doesn't happen to include his business, does this man's appearance tonight make any difference whatsoever or is this simply a formality?
Well, the bottom line answer to that is, that's not my decision. That's up to the council members to vote. That's why you have a public hearing. But I think, you know, Donald, that every one of these, if there is a person objecting, you listen to them and you weigh it in against every other thing that is going on. And your version of simply adding gray? Adding gray most likely means that we go back and pull it and then go back to the planning commission on the county and on the city because we get to this question, would they consider it a moderate change or a significant change? And that's what I'm talking about. You keep sending the process backwards or do you make some effort to move forward? I mean, that becomes the question.
Well, if you were adding district, if you were adding uses to a downtown commercial district, you're not making it more restrictive, you're making it actually more permissive. And so from a, if your question is substantial change standpoint, courts have said that's not a substantial change. So, I mean, we're here, we understand you've got a planning process and frankly, we applaud the planning process, but it's not too late to fix a problem that we've identified. You've asked for comments and we're here. There are easy solutions to fix that doesn't throw, you know, this zoning code, cause holistic changes and have you start over. That's not what we're, our changes would not cause that level of change and having to start the process over.
Are you still at the place where I'm wondering what use would you leave for competitive for having?
Here's what happens. So let's, let me give you an example. Let me give you, so say we have, say we get all the mercantile licenses even though that's not the only evidence of a business. If it's operating, that's evidence. If there's a lease, that's evidence. But let's say we have, just for simplification, we have one building and half of the building is being used by a company that manufactures pallets. The other half is being used by a company that, you know, stores household goods, a warehouse facility. Ordinance gets adopted, both uses are pre-existing non-conforming. Fast forward a year, the tenants say, we got to go somewhere else. And so now you have new tenants. And one of the new tenants is manufactures widgets, something different. A different type of manufacturing because your ordinance makes distinctions between different types of manufacturing. So now, under the ordinance... So now, under the ordinance, we have a, a different type of manufacturing use when we were technically grandfathered under this other type of manufacturing use. Or you have the, the warehouse space that was being utilized. Now that company wants to use, you know, two-thirds of the building instead of just half and they want to, they want to, they want to do warehousing and now they're expanding that non-conformity beyond the limits of what the ordinance would permit. Or they want to convert that warehouse use to a different type of industri, a different type of industrial use, not manufacturing, not warehousing. And, and that is not part of the pre-existing non-conforming protection that they had. That's the problem that you have because this building is going to be dynamic. The space that's going to be leased to tenants is going to flex over time. They're going to have different types of tenants in there doing different types of industrial uses. And that's the inherent problem that you have in saying, no, no, just rely on your non-conforming protection. That's the problem. And, and, and you, revitalization and reuse of that building will be absolutely stifled. Non-conforming, if you look at shopping centers that were built a long time ago, the worst thing you can do for any commercial property is to make it non-conformity because, non-conforming because now you're limiting the options that the landlord has and you're limiting their ability to revitalize it. Just one comment on the planning process. You know, I, the, the comp plan process that you're going to start is a great process and, and doing all the charrettes and so forth, those are all about public input. And, you know, to some extent, I think the, the tail's wagging the dog a little bit here because you're going to adopt a zoning code and then immediately start what's effectively a public input process to determine the vision of the city. A little bit backwards, I understand you have an old zoning code that needs to be fixed. But understand that what you're doing here is you're taking 29 districts and you're cramming them down to nine, which I agree, simpler, simpler's better. The charts are nice. The ordinance is much prettier, whether it's more effective, I don't know. But when you, when you do such a wholesale radical change, you're going to have problems like this. And I think all we're asking is, you've, you've started the public comment process. We've got a change that we think is fairly simple to make, that satisfies our concerns and that's really the only concerns that we have and that you can move forward. And if you want to adopt a new zoning code as kind of an interim code, then so be it. And then start the planning process. But, but don't, don't stifle what's already been happening and that's what would happen.
So to be specific, just to-
I think, sorry, this has been a really long discussion. I would ask for you guys to write something up so that it's clear to me because we've had this discussion for a long time. So are there other folks who have questions?
Hi, my name is Josh Joffe, 2534 North Third Street. I did the rehabilitation of the glass factory building and then I did the Hill Cafe at 13th and Market. I would like, I, look, I'm in favor of simplifying the zoning. I think what you guys are doing is long overdue. I do have some concerns about the process. I mean, it's been a long time since the city has discussed zoning and now, I mean, we're, I mean, we're ramming this thing through with no new public comment and a lot of things have changed. Like, for example, all the school buildings in the city are for sale now. Then the new zone, they're all institutional. In the new institutional zone, no residential use is permitted. You can open up a shooting gallery by right, but you can't convert it into apartments? I mean, I mean, some things here, I mean, like, I do think more thought needs to be put into the comprehensive plan before adopting the new zoning. There is a lot of unintended consequences that could happen, which I'm sure people don't want to see. I mean, if you look at the furlough building, that was just done across from the Susquehanna Art Museum. The new density requirement, instead of getting 26 nice apartments there, and they are nice, they would have been stuck with eight. And no tax abatement or any incentive will make that project worthwhile. Me at the glass factory, I would have been chopped down to 18 units. I mean, so, and I mean, so just to, sorry, I'm rambling. I'm not used to speaking in public, so I apologize. I, I think that you need to put some thought into where residential uses are allowed. I mean, not allowing residential uses in commercial, general districts or institutional districts or even industrial districts is backwards. I mean, every city in America is looking to rehab old blighted industrial properties and the first thing they do is say, hey, let's make apartments or mixed-use development or anything else that makes sense for the neighborhood and what, and what the, what the, the need for the community is. The density, I think, really needs to be thought through. I understand that the city does not want dense development that allows crappy housing. I get it. But then again, I mean, look at the 1500 project. I understand some people may not think it's the prettiest building, but this is the only place in a hundred mile radius where you could even try to build something like that. So, I mean, if you want suburban housing, there's plenty of type of places that compete with the city that offer suburban housing. But there, there's really a huge opportunity through the comprehensive plan process for Harrisburg to eat the suburbs lunch and provide new development, new housing that says, hey, you know what, a commercial neighborhood district here, you're allowed to go up all along Sixth Street, you're allowed to go up 75 feet, but you're only allowed one residential unit per 1,200 square feet of land area? So, okay, I'm going to go pick up 300 feet of frontage, build up 75 feet and I can put in, and I'm only, let's say, 40 feet deep, so, okay, I can put in 30 residential units in a, a building that's seven stories that spans 300 feet of frontage with commercial on the first floor? I mean, that's not, I mean, you know, I mean, if that's what the city wants, that's what the city wants, but I think that more thought needs to be put into it. And if you want to adopt interim zoning, I mean, I, I would encourage it to be more permissive and you guys can restrict what you want to do as you find out what, what the neighborhoods say we want or we don't want. I think that, I mean, even with the density too, I mean, that you have de facto density limitation with parking too because you have to say there's a certain amount of parking per, per use. And I just do want to go on record formally objecting to the process and that the legal requirements for adopting this were met as far as advertising, the content of the advertising or anything else. I mean, I just want to go on record saying that. And I, I do hope that some of my comments are taken under advisement. Density is not the enemy of the city. You guys just need quality operators. I mean, you look at the glass factory, I mean, I could, I could have come in and butchered the building and ran it badly or I could have done what I did and did it nicely. I mean, you, you have to allow, I mean, zoning's not going to prohibit bad operators in the city. You have to allow opportunity. I mean, there's nowhere I can go in suburbia, find a building like that and say, hey, this makes sense, this is good for the neighborhood, let's do this. I mean, in my honest opinion, the city of Harrisburg doesn't need one new townhouse. And if anything, you should be looking at some of these neighborhoods where they're blighted and these buildings are past their economic useful life, their physical useful life and say, okay, what do we want here in the future? Let's tear down a block and what makes sense to build in its place? You know, and I mean, there's a, there, I mean, that's what a lot of, of cities that are in Harrisburg's situation are looking at doing. They're saying, hey, you know what, on South 17th Street, what, what makes sense? I mean, you're, you're, you're 60 seconds away from the Capitol Beltway. I mean, you have 100,000 cars a day go past there. To say, we're, we only want to do a certain type of development is short-sighted, you know? Especially when you talk about affordable housing and the diverse needs of the community and the various communities that, that are in the city. So I, I mean, to summarize, I think this is long overdue. I think this is necessary. I wish that the process was a little bit longer. I feel like this was kind of a rush. So I, I mean, I do, I do object to it. But I, I mean, I'm in favor of progress. I think this is a, a right step, but, you know, I'll, I'll draft a letter, I think, pointing out a couple of things that I think, like a, a couple of small changes will probably go a long way as far as allowing the development that you want. I mean, some of these things that require variances, it's impossible to legally get a variance. So I mean, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So during our first meeting, we went through the legal foundation as to how and why we have the authority to, and the ability to enact these amendments. If anyone has questions about that legal foundation or has, you know, case law or something that indicates otherwise, please feel free to email it to me. My email address is s daniels@cityofharrisburg.com. So, you know-
But they should really write official one to the city clerk.
Yes.
This is the record.
The city clerk.
We're making a record.
Okay, so-
To the city clerk's office in City Hall.
Okay, so it's-
Just to clarify, I'm really interested in suing, I just wanted to go on.
Well, no, I mean, the, we want to, we want to make sure the process is a good one and that it's, you know, that it's a valuable one and that, you know, we don't have to keep rechecking things over and over again. So, so what's the email address?
What's, what's the email?
What's the email address? Is it just city clerk?
Kirk.
Okay, so-
I can give it to you.
Yeah, kpetrosky@cityofhbg.com for, you know, that kind of input. As we look into making amendments to this, you know, the more specific your recommendations are, the better for me in terms of, I'm a very visual person, so being able to see changes.
As, out of curiosity, I mean, are, are you guys genuinely going to look at some of the suggestions that are small that might have a big impact? I mean, is this, are you guys pretty married to what this is and you think based on the other plans that, like moving forward the comprehensive? I mean, you guys have a full plate, you know, so getting into the intricacies, intricacies of zoning maybe, I mean, I, I mean, how interested are you really in looking at some of the comments and saying, you know, we will incorporate some of these that may make sense?
I think we're very serious about it. I mean, we've got to sit down and analyze it and then sit down with our planning and economic development department to sit down and say, what is really reasonable and are they, can we really implement and institute these as they suggested? And what, what are the impacts and the drawbacks from them? I mean, I would take it lightly. When you send your suggestions in, we're going to read them, evaluate them, and then we're going to fit them in where we can. And if they can't, we're going to tell you they can't fit in. And that the, the un-conformity will be what you will have to use if that's in fact case in point. You know, if that's the direction that we're going to go in. But no, we're going to take the information, review it, assess it as a committee and then determine from there whether or not we can use it. If we can, we will, and if we can't, we'll come back and tell you that too. I mean, even though this might be a short window, this process has been going on for a long time. It's kind of sad that, that people are just now getting maybe data or getting the information to come back to us with, but it is what it is. And so we're going to work through the process. And like I said, it's a document, it's always going to move, it's a process. Remember then processes, there's always, you have to always have room for change. And so we can't be converging to the point that our minds are just thinking that we're going down one-way path without being able to open the opportunity up for other things. And so that's what we have to do. If we have to narrow it down and open it back up, then we'll do that and make the modifications as we continue going because that's what we're here to do. It's not, not to just do it and say, this isn't what's, you know, good. It's, I mean, because when you look at where the city was even back in the 1950s, it was nine zones. You went from nine to 20 numbers. And we're going back, reverting back because back then it was all industrial and commercial at one time. And then it grew into residential and other problems. So it expanded. And so now it's kind of convoluted and now we're trying to streamline it and bring it back to something that's really simplistic so that when people look at it, they're not sitting here all over the place saying, well, can I do this here? Can I do that here? No, we're narrowing it back down and then if we need to make modifications inside of that, we're willing to sit down and work through that process. And so we're not closed-minded, we just want to make things, I think, a little bit simpler, moving forward. And so it's a process that we're going to continue to work through. And your input is important. And not only, I mean, it's just not for the people in this room, but it's for the entire community because there are a lot of people that aren't here that don't even understand what's going on in their neighborhoods. So it's about advertisement so they too have an opportunity to review the data because they might not be commercial developers, they might not be industrial developers, but guess what? You affect the neighborhood that you live in. And if the people in the neighborhood don't want that type of business there, they have a right to come back and say, hey, counsel, what are you doing to us? And so we have to take all of that into consideration as well. And I think we're going to do that. So we're not going to have blinders on, we're going to open our minds up, we're going to make the changes where we believe it's prudent and where it can function today and then modify things as we go.
Absolutely.
That's just my, that, that's where I am. And I think the rest of my members sitting up here, even though she's the chair, I've had building and housing before, so I mean, you've got to keep an open mind, you just can't, can't think one way.
Yeah, we're, I'm absolutely in agreement. The one thing that I am concerned with is that the complicated nature of our current code does deter businesses from coming in. And I think about my example where I opened my practice in the city of Harrisburg, just figuring out whether my property was zoned appropriately because of that pyramid structure was very complicated. And it, I had to make a decision between, you know, do I open in Harrisburg or do I open in Susquehanna, right? Because Susquehanna is just a lot easier and as a small, a solo person, you know, the easiest, the better for me. So I know that, you know, that if I, I submitted the application to get the ability to use my, my home as a business and I left it to chance and if it had been denied, I would have just opened up in Susquehanna. But the thing is, it's, the process right now is very complicated for anyone who wants to come into the city and we are deterring potential, you know, small businesses, maybe large businesses, whatever. So I think there's two things driving us. We want to simplify the coding process, but we also want to make sure that the, the code is also something that residents have input in, are able to, you know, are able to make the adjustments that meet the needs of the residents. So go ahead, you've been standing for a while.
My name is Lauren Gross. I'm the Government Affairs Director with the Greater Harrisburg Association of Realtors and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the association. And you actually gave me a perfect lead-in because you're talking a lot about business and our commercial members have very, very serious reservations about this proposed zoning ordinance. I will be frank, it's already really hard to do business in the city of Harrisburg and there's already a lot of the deck stacked against Harrisburg. The new parking changes are costing some of our commercial members clients and tenants because they're moving to the West Shore, they're moving to Susquehanna, they're moving somewhere that they can get more parking. So throwing up more roadblocks is going to make doing business in the city even harder than it already is. I was looking at the, the documents that you provided and one of the things that I noticed was you say to protect and foster appropriate expansion of existing institutions and then you list several of them. A lot of them are tax exempt. That's also a concern. The more, the more tax exempt businesses you, you expand, the more property you take off the tax roll, the more that affects business. We also, as the Realtors, question, why are you doing the zoning before you do the comprehensive plan? And I know that's been brought up tonight and I know that's been talked about, but my association wants to go on the record as saying, we think this is a backwards way to do it. You're building an engine and you don't know where you're going. You don't have a car to put the engine in. We think that the better plan would be to have a comprehensive plan, know where you want to go, get input from us. We were actually called and invited to your public comment period at the beginning of this month, we were invited to tonight. We, for this, we have not been involved. We also feel that it's a very short time period. Some of my commercial members have, have concerns about a part of the zoning that talks about signs. And I know that there's been talks about like if the property is currently in use, then it's grandfathered in and if it goes vacant, you have a year. In real estate, we use something called DOM, Days on Market, to register, to, to measure how long a property sits on the market. In Harrisburg, we don't use days, we use years. The average time on market for a commercial property in the city of Harrisburg is three years. We're not going to, commercial properties aren't going to meet the, the exception for a year's use. It's just not going to happen. We have too many properties sitting vacant already on the commercial front. We also have concerns about signage for commercial property. I know we had a meeting with, with Ms. Parker yesterday. It says that you can have no sign larger than 10 square feet or you need a permit. Is that 10 square feet, both sides, 10 square feet total? Most real estate signs are 32 square feet one side. If we have to get, if we have to get a permit, if our members, if my members have to get a permit for a special exemption to put up their real estate sign and they have to renew that permit every 30 days, that's an additional cost of doing business in the city of Harrisburg. The chair of my Government Affairs Committee works with, is a, is a commercial Realtor. He's had a property listed on Cameron Street for six years. When his company bought it, it was 100,000 square feet, 19,000 were leased. They now have all but 19,000 square feet leased, but it's been an uphill battle to get people to come into Harrisburg, to come into Cameron Street and they've been, they've had that sign up for six years. I mean, it's, it's been there for so long, it's a landmark. Oh, turn left at the RE/MAX sign. You don't, we- You don't, we, the Realtors support Harrisburg, the Realtors want Harrisburg to be a vibrant city, but we do have some very serious concerns about this zoning map. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mel Johnson speaking. I have some real concerns about the map that you see here and the map as it was when I came here. And part of what I hope happens is that between this map and the comprehensive plan, we will have a more defined and enlarged definition of spot zoning. The spot zoning situation has caused a lot of the zones to expand and the violations or the changes that have been made have been disconcerting to many people who want to look at the zoning map. So, we may need to do some fine tuning, but once it's done, we ought to be able to depend on it and not have to worry about individual spot zoning problems as we have for a long time. That's all I have.
And to the comments that are about this should happen after and as part of the comprehensive plan. When you're in a comprehensive plan process, you're doing a zoning map and sort of thinking about what's going to happen, we have to do and look at zoning through the comprehensive plan. This change from that change, frankly, we will know and frankly, know quickly through the process from everybody what is and isn't working. I mean, again, comprehensive plan, we haven't had one in 40 years. I mean, we have to do zoning through the comprehensive plan. We know that's not working. This adjustment is an adjustment that lets us start down the path. When we're done, citizens may say and businesses may say or residents may say, "We don't need nine, we need 13," or "We need seven." And we need it this way or we need it that. We need, we need to have a spot zoning barred from certain places if that was legally possible, but we need to address it with all of the conditions that we have. This has been, and there was public hearings and, and, every public hearing that happens happens with a public advertisement. So, when the Planning Commission met and voted on it last year, there was a public advertisement. There was public input last year from a number of developers. So, this process isn't, isn't an end of itself. We happen to be in a series of processes. And the question is, do you finish this stage, move to the next stage so we get to where, again, this is a planning for the long-term purpose? We could throw this up, but then we go back to that and start all over again, which everyone has made clear they don't want it. And so, you know, at some point, you have to have faith amongst yourselves that we can get together. Frankly, I think we're all glad people are here pointing out the exact problems because, you know, at some point, you get one people voicing their concerns and then when we have more meetings, people come out and say, "No, that affects me." That's what this is for. But, you know, this is an opportunity that I think most places don't get in terms of adjusting with a comprehensive plan because frankly, that's a document on paper that may or may not work. And here, you sort of have a test case ahead of it so you can start doing the work and then seeing whether you're really impacted or not. And I think, you know, we would expect anyone who sees this as a real impact and is feeling it, we're going to know that through the comprehensive planning process. We're going to hear them louder, they're going to make sure we're heard, and that affects where we're going. But, you know, the comprehensive planning is looking way down the road.
How long do they have to endure it, do you think? If this gets passed and they're immediately affected, how long do you think they're going to have to endure it before it eventually gets fixed after the comprehensive plan gets adopted and then you decide to perhaps revisit zoning?
See, I don't think it's a "then perhaps revisit zoning." That's just not...
Okay, then, okay, then when you revisit zoning? How many years do you want?
I think the hope is that we're done comprehensive plan in two.
Less than two.
Less than two. 18 months is the goal. I mean, but there's a lot, but there's lots of participation that goes with that. And then zoning, hopefully, we know exactly where we're going at the other side of that. I mean, so, it's sort of a continuo, you know, it's a continuing arc here of, of work. It's not just, we're not trying to do these as separate little pieces. It's trying to make up for a lot of lost time of, you know, looking and moving us into the 21st century. Is that ambitious? Yes. Is that idealistic? Probably. But, you know, you know, you have to start with ideas if you're going to change what's there. And I think the one thing we've had is that, you know, for the whole city to prosper, we have to change what's there. And so, you know, we're going to do, I think people want frankly experimentation by and large to see what will make things better for them. And so, we're moving there. And if this was, if this was it after the comprehensive plan, and you wouldn't get a zoning change again probably for years. But here you have, here it's twice inside of a fairly, relatively, it may be from a legal point of view, small window of time. I don't know if it's from a other point of view, but, you know, but if you're done this in three years, four years from this, that's a lot to have done two zonings and a comprehensive plan. Yep. If is right. So, and frankly, council could say they don't like this, council could say they don't like the comprehensive plan, people could say that. That's why it's a public event. That's why there's public comment. That's why there's input. So...
So, this, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Carl Feldman. I'm a resident at 115 North Street. I'm hoping that and optimistic that this administration and this council can fine-tune the plan because I think it is light years ahead of what we're currently working on. What I'd like to specifically bring to the attention of council and the administration is something I think that a lot of Harrisburg residents might find sacrilegious, but I think it's time to be a little more open-minded about the Riverfront District in particular in allowing greater use of density there. It's some of the most valuable property in the city, but we don't allow for the full, the full realization of that value. It's an excellent park, it's a pedestrian and cycling transit route. That means people aren't in their cars and they would be able to access it if we raise the height cap, which I think currently under Riverfront District, now currently in the draft, is 45 feet. If we raise that up, you could do greater density and the setback requirement, I think, is 50 feet, which is pretty extensive as well. So, I'd just like to see some open-mindedness about realizing the full potential of that property so that more people can use and enjoy the benefits of being a long riverfront park.
Any other questions?
Mr. Ford, do you have a comment?
I'm trying to stay quiet. Let me just say that Harrisburg has had to absorb a lot of change over the last year. While I admire the planning process, I for one am a little shell-shocked at this point with all of the changes that we've had to, we've had to absorb. So, I can understand the developer's point of view relative to pushing this process out a little bit. I really, really can. But let me say this. We just went through this with the restaurateurs around parking. Parking is one of the things that we had to absorb. As a matter of fact, I'm happy we're up here because I don't have to risk getting a $30 ticket for, for my attendance at a city council function, which I've gotten, my only tickets from attending a city council function and getting a ticket at 20 minutes to 7:00 because I didn't plan properly. I understand. That aside, we just went through this with the restaurateurs and the problem was that they did not participate until Armageddon was at the door. So, if you all are really interested in having input to this process, I think you make a good case for delaying the vote because Harrisburg has had to absorb a lot of change in a very short time. So, maybe we should consider delaying the vote on this. But the cost on your side of suggesting that is your commitment to become part of the process. The restaurateurs did not look at parking until it was done and they were all suffering. Then they wanted to come and have input into the process. It was a done deal that, that it was, race had started, crossed the finish line, it was done. So, here's something that has not quite been consummated yet. I think there's an opportunity here to make some adjustments even if that requires delaying six months on this. But the other commitment that the developers have to make is a commitment to participate in the process and not wait until the 11th hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions or comments? The mayor is in the room. Would you like to address the audience? Okay, so, I'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn today's meeting. Please continue to look at information. We'll meet tomorrow again at Berry Hills Boys and Girls Club, same time. And please email me, email the clerk, any questions or things you think we should be looking at. Thank you.